Okay, thank you. It is seven forty P M. I would like to call to order the special meeting of the Norwalk Common Council for June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. If you'll please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance
to the flag
of the United States
Americans and to the Republic
or which it stands
which it stands
one nation
nations
under God indivisible with liberty and justice
for all
Thank you, clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mister Burnett.
President.
Mister Camacho. Mister Goldstein. Miss Najelski Eichner.
Present.
Miss Smith.
Here.
Miss Ayers.
Present.
Mister Hubelmann.
Present.
Miss Revluse.
Present.
Miss Young.
Here.
Mister Caides. Miss McMur. Miss Alterman. Mister Meek.
Here.
Miss Shanahan. Mister Camacho. Mister Goldstein. Mister Caides. Miss McMur. Miss Alterman. Miss Shanahan. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public participation. Is there anybody who's tuning in wishing to address the common council? On the charter revision.
Well, um, Patsy Bresch here. Um, I thought this was going to be a working back and forth, a work session.
Uh, that's basically, uh, Mister Mednick will be going over our, uh, Articles one through four, I believe.
Yeah.
Um, and as we move along, uh, I don't know if you have any words that you'd like to say before that?
I, I don't. I'm just glad that we're getting this started and, um, it looks like some people have really paid attention and read it over the weekend or whatever. So, um, I'm hoping we can get a lot accomplished this evening.
Thank you. Um, is there anybody else that wishes to enjoy, uh, to address the council?
Mayor, can we record the members of the charter revision in the record that are present?
Uh, yes, we could do that. Uh, let me, let me, let's get into public session, then we'll, uh, introduce everybody who's here.
Okay.
So I'm not hearing anybody. I'm not hearing that anybody is wishing to address the council. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mister Mayor.
Okay, so having said that, um, Miss Bresch, if you will be uh, kind enough to introduce your charter revision members that are present.
Okay, well, I'm obviously present and I can, um, I think I can see some of our members, Benita Watson Riley. Um, and I've lost the arrow, so, um, Tyler Fairburn is with us. And if I'm missing anyone, I, I can't see them on the screen, so if they would speak up for the record.
Let's see.
And then our counsel, obviously, Steve, Steve Attorney Stephen Mednick.
As I'm looking at the attendees, I don't see any other members of your Charter Revision Commission either.
Okay.
So having said that, and thank you all for being here, it is now my pleasure to turn this presentation over to Attorney Steve Mednick.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes?
Excuse me, who's on the phone there? There's a phone number here.
Yeah, you know, uh, you're right. I don't know who that is. Um, whoever has nine five oh two.
That's it, Telesco? Okay.
Yeah, minutes, for the minutes.
All right, so thank you, Darlene, uh, Miss Young. We will now, um, turn this over to Attorney Steve Mednick.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad it was not the NSA. And, um, can I share? Can I put something on the screen for everybody? So it'll give us a tool for walking through and what I'm going to try to do, I'm not going to repeat everything our chair did so well last week, but I'm going to kind of walk through chapter by chapter. Um, as you know, one of your colleagues did provide some comments, and I'll try to deal with those as we go through and then leave it up to each of you to raise questions on each of the chapters, uh, each of the articles. Is that okay, Mayor?
Yes.
I think, let me see if I can share. I think I can. Uh, let me get it up on the screen. Do you see the Norwalk Charter?
Yes.
Good.
Yep, it's there.
Good. All right, so I'm going to walk through quickly. I'm, I'm going to go over some sections really quickly so that we don't get bogged down. Again, um, this starts off with the charge that you gave us on restructuring, um, and reorganizing the charter, uh, determining the relevance of the special acts that form the basis of the current charter. Um, again, uh, our project was to reform the document. We were making changes on the edges. The real objective is to take a document from a hundred and ten years ago and try to make it a readable, workable document for two thousand twenty-three and beyond. Um, uh, this starts off as, uh, as Patsy mentioned last week, uh, that with the setting the context. I've never done that before, uh, in a, in a charter, and it was an idea that the commission came up with to at least historically say, this is why we did it. This is what the charter does. This is what the charter is. Uh, and these are the functions that are laid out in the charter. I think it's a pretty useful opening, uh, for the document. And then the organization we talked about last week, um, is, uh, part one is the main charter, uh, the government of the city. Part two are the taxing districts, the four taxing districts, uh, that actually provide services and have taxing um, and revenue raising authority. And part three are some historical, uh, provisions that we'll go over at a later point in the process. Um, just wanted to remind you, because you'll not see this anywhere else. There are, there is no table contents for your current charter. If there was, this is kind of what it would look like. Um, and it's, uh, in some order, but not real order, but you'll see that it just kind of lays out the, uh, some of, some of the, all of the responsibilities, but some of them are laid out in different places. Uh, and there's no logic, but notice, you will not even see the mayor in there. The mayor is somewhere in one of these sections under officers and employees. Um, it's a jumble, and if you took these articles, the way it's currently written, and those are the titles of the articles, it would be hard for the general public to really get an, uh, an idea of what, uh, is in your charter. Um, and so, uh, the idea, user friendly with a question mark, I think we talked about this in the, uh, transmittal letter, uh, that so many of the uh, things are repeated in multiple different places to find out where the budget is. You have to go to at least three different articles, Article five, Article six, and Article twelve. Um, but not including the Board of Estimates, Article, yeah, Article six is where the Board of Estimate is. Um, user friendly with an exclamation point. This is the, this is the, um, this is the layout of the proposed charter, the kind of, uh, with the exception of the word education being spelt wrong. Um, the, uh, lays out the chap, the articles of the charter in a coherent way so that people understand kind of what's in the document. Article one, there are not a lot of, um, provisions in Article one. Uh, there is one question of, i- if the councilwoman doesn't mind, I'll raise those issues. Nora, is that okay?
Uh, sure, please, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, uh, let me just point out that, uh, the councilwoman raised a number of issues. I won't go over, I, I'll be happy to talk to her offline about it and talk to the chair and others about some of the edit, what I call editorial changes, co- semi-colons, colons, those kinds of things. If that's okay with her, I'll, uh, we'll do that, um, offline and not take up a lot of time with the, the council on some of those issues. Uh, but she did raise some very, very, um, good and useful uh, issues as, uh, drafting issues as we went through. In, um, in Article one, uh, there is a general grant of authority, and I think she picked up a redundancy in, um, in, uh, subsection A, um, where it talks about the, um, state constitution and general statutes, uh, 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 provide most of the powers to the general, to the, uh, cities, but the city shall have all the powers specifically granted by the charter, and those powers fairly implied in or incidental to the powers expressly granted, um, by the state to the management of the property, government, and affairs of the city. I think this is current language. And then there's another cl- clause in there now granted, or that may here and after be granted to municipalities under the state constitution or general statutes. She raised the point that it's redundant. I think it is, so I will probably, um, in a draft that you'll see next week, if we, you know, after, after we have discussion tonight, if there's any specific comments that are being made, that will be, um, that will be memorialized, I will make them in the document and send the document back to you before our next meeting. So you'll probably see a consolidation based on that comment by the council member. Um, Article two is, uh, where we introduce the uh, some of the, um, some of the, uh, uh, introduced members, the two common term used in the charter. Um, I'll go through some of the comments the council member made and then be happy to answer any questions anybody else may have, um, on the document. Um, I'll go through alphabetically. Uh, does everybody have their charter in front of them so that they can see what those definitions are? Or I'll put them up right up there on the board. Here they are. So I'm going to go through them alphabetically. Um, and, uh, one, the first question that was raised was whether the council is a board or commission. Um, the answer is no, they are not a board or commission. They are the legislative body of the city. What I want to look at carefully based on the question that she raised was whether I need to further distinguish that in places where I use board or commission or establish standards for boards and commissions. Um, for example, in this chapter, I will take a look at the, um, uh, the issues on conduct, civility, and all that to make sure that the council is not excluded because they are not in the definition of board and commission. Um, it, did, is, does that go to your point?
That's exactly. Thank you very much, Steve. That was exactly what I was asking.
Okay, good. I will make sure that is taken care of. It's a very good observation. Um, uh, under the definition of budgeted entity, um, I didn't think it was necessary, um, but the question was raised whether we need to define authority. Uh, the only reason I use authority in the definition is it's currently used in your charter. Um, do most authorities, and I might want to talk to the Corporation Council about this, um, I, I wasn't going to juggle around with it to see whether or not, do you have a housing authority in, uh, Norwalk? You do.
We do.
All right.
Uh, yeah, it's, uh, it's federal.
It, it's federally funded, but it's created, it's municipal entity created by the municipality.
Yes.
To perform We also have a parking authority, uh, and a water control authority.
Yeah, and in many communities, the charter does govern the broad parameters of how those authorities conduct themselves. So I've always left the definitions in there. I don't know what people think around the table. I don't have strong feelings about it. Maybe, uh, uh, the councilwoman could, um, you know, explain why she thinks it needs to be defined.
I mean, I really was asking, just, you know, we've, we have so carefully defined now and, and ways that I very much appreciate and agree with. We've so carefully defined all of these other terms. Um, and I just didn't know if there's sort of, I don't know if there's any need to, or if there's any sort of, um, reason that we would or wouldn't, but it just struck me that we, um, it struck me as a, as a notable lowercase when everything else, virtually everything else in there is defined. And so I don't know if there's any reason we need to. If we don't, then we don't need to spend time on it.
Yeah, I, I don't have strong feelings. How does anybody else feel? I'll talk to the corp council also. If, if, uh, the, the office thinks that we should um, define it because we want to make it clear, a- and I think this does make it clear that the charter applies to those authorities, then it probably makes sense to, uh, to have it defined. So I'll leave that as an open.
This is, uh, David Hubelmann. Aren't, aren't authorities, uh, defined statutorily in the Connecticut General Statutes?
Well, that you, you have different authorities that are created and, uh, where we have, um, underlying, uh, enabling legislation allows us to create the authorities. Whether there's a standard definition, I do not know. I'll take a look at that. Um,
I think it's important, in some way, I, I agree with, um, uh, my colleague, uh, uh, Miss Najelski Eichner, that that we may need a definition in there because we do, we create them through a statutory, uh, uh, you know, grant, so.
Happy to do it. It, it, to me, it's, it's, it's an easy thing to do. I'm, I'm more than happy to do it.
Thank you.
So let's just do that.
Uh, this is Patsy. We did briefly ask a similar question during this, uh, section and and I think it, the very fact that we're talking about it implies that we really need to define it. So I think that was a, a, a good point.
Absolutely. Thank you. Um, the next question comes up. Um, uh, there was a mark, well, there was an editorial markup on capital budget, which I think is fine. Um, in, under the cat, term capital budget items. Um, there's a clause in the middle of the definition that, uh, the council member wants to have deleted. And I'm trying to remember, let me just take a quick look if I can. Um, let me pull my charter up for a second. Look at my end notes. I'm sorry, I have, I'm working with about four different documents here at one time. And I just want to make sure that I don't misspeak. Um, um, capital budget items. I believe yeah, this is a term that is derived from your current core code of ordinances. And when we were meeting with the CFO, going through the budget section, which actually was the very first major thing that the, uh, commission focused on, we worked on this definition, um, and, um, the does everybody have the charter in front of them, the document? Would it be easier if I put it on the screen?
Yes, I, I think it would be.
All right, I, I'm going to juggle through documents though, guys, so I'm sorry. Um, to try to make this work for everybody. Um,
It's on two pages in there.
Yep.
Right.
I got, I'm, I'm going to stop the share and then just put up a new document. You, do you still see my PowerPoint? Not the new docu, not the charter?
No, we see the charter.
Okay, good.
Yeah, and we see capital budget on, uh, top right.
There we go. So, um, I'm going to put this down here. The, um, council member, tell me, I think the language that you're requesting ends
um
having
They're facility, ends with other facilities. Um, and the next line. So, and this is, you know, it's again, it's not a major point, um, but I, I always worry that lists, even when they have a careful, you know, shall not be limited to. There's always this tendency for lists to become the focus, right? And I'm not really sure that the list adds anything to our understanding. I think the key point is that it is things that have a usable expectancy of at least two years. So I just, uh, my instinct is always to take out a list when the list doesn't isn't necessary. Um, if it has the risk of people sort of, uh, narrowing people's understanding, but it's a minor point.
How does everybody feel about that? This is language from your current ordinance, so I'm not saying that it's written stone because we're, we're working with your stone right now and changing it, so we can do that. The other thing you can always do is, as long as the basic definition serves your purposes, if you need to enhance your definition consistent with this, um, that's what ordinances are for, uh, is you could always take the ordinances to further uh, define what a capital budget item is. Um, so, um, so I have no quarrel with, um, um, I, I think we, we don't take it all out. I think we, we have to leave the first clause, these capital budget items shall have a use of, have a useful expectancy of at least two years.
Mm-hmm.
I got the rest.
Can I also say something though, Steve?
Yes.
One of the things that I thought about it, because I'm, I'm kind of acting as the every person, every man, every woman, um, because I'm not a lawyer and I just want to be able to read this. It gave me, what that did was give me an idea of the kinds of things that you were talking about that would come in under capital budget. I understand what you're saying about it being a list, but it kind of gives me the ideas as a person reading this, what you're really talking about, the kinds of things that you're talking about. That's why I liked it. Not, again, not saying that it has to stay in or not, but that's the kind of thing that I don't know, it gives anybody reading it some idea of what capital budget items might be.
Yeah, absolutely. That makes so much sense. And I think that's a valid reason to leave it in. I don't have a problem with that. If it's valuable to the, to, uh, understanding, then that's a good enough reason to have it there.
Cool. The majority leader has her hand up, I believe. Mayor, am I supposed to call on people or are you doing that? I don't want to stand on seven anybody's toes.
Thank you, Steve. I, I, I then was just looking at that to just say, how would this sentence continue? But I see, so you would just say long-term assets having a usable expectancy, blah, blah, blah. If you eliminated the highlighted text, correct? Is that what you were thinking?
That's correct, but yeah, but I think that, uh, Commissioner
Yeah.
Wally just made a pretty good argument.
Right.
Uh, so so is there consensus that we'll leave it?
I would, this is Patsy. Um, again, this whole section was to really make the charter uh, understandable to the average citizen. So, uh, that was why we stayed with what we have here, and I think uh, that was a very strong intent of the commission. So I would like it to stay in there. I think it has a value to a lot of people.
Okay.
So hearing no other, uh, I'll just move on and we'll leave that as is. Great comment, as always. Uh, thank you. Um, the department head definition, which, um, comes down a little further here. Um, I think that, um, the council member came up with a good observation. Um, I've never liked that term. I've used it. It's been used in other charters. She raised a question about substantial supervising control of a permanent nature over other municipal employees. I think you could simply say substantial, um, uh, supervisory control over other municipal employees and cut out permanent nature. Because I don't want anybody going to court saying they have a permanent job since they have supervised the control of a permanent nature. I never looked at it that way. Um, but I, I would recommend that we, um, we modify that term if that's okay with any, if everybody, uh, has, uh, anybody has a question on that.
Steve, could you tell me where that is again?
I'm sorry, Article thirteen's right on the screen now.
Okay, I got you. Yep, yep.
It's right here, of, the supervisory control over other employees, we would take of a permanent nature out.
Uh, I think, well, that, I think that, um, refers to just the control, no?
Yeah, it does. Um, but it, it, it does lead to, I think the point is, I agree with you, Mayor, but I think it leads to some confusion. I don't think taking it out undermines what we're trying to say.
Yep.
And, and the other thing you also want to make sure of is if you decide you want to do a reorganization, you don't want a department head saying, I have permanent control over these people. You can't take them away from me. So I don't know if that was the thought, but that, that certainly would lead to that argument.
Got you.
Good, that was a great catch. Thank you very much. Um, the next definition, I'll just put them up on the screen, I guess, uh, is this one, does everybody's, is this large enough for everybody to see? I guess since everybody's on Zoom, it's okay, uh, when we're in the, when we're in the room, I usually have to enlarge it.
Yeah, if you highlight it, if you highlight what you're talking to, I think that helps too.
There you go. Right here.
Yep.
So the council member, and, and, and does anyone have any questions on any of the other definitions? I don't want to skip over anybody else's questions. Um, because somebody turned in their homework. I'm ta- I'm taking advantage of the homework that was done. Um, the council
Mister Mednick, we're taking advantage of the homework that Miss Nora, uh, Eichner did for us as well, so, um,
Okay.
this is the beginning.
That's great. Okay, no, I appreciate it. And it's, and it's really very helpful, and I thank, I thank everybody, and everybody's raised a lot of, uh, good questions privately and, and publicly, so it's terrific. Um, Nora did raise, if you don't mind me calling Nora, raise the question about, um, the, the last clause that is known as the Capital Projects Program. I will ask that we hold this item until we get to the budget, and let's talk about it when we get to the budget section, which is, um, which is further on in the document, because we have used this term in two different ways, uh, to comport with the charter. If we refine it, we can clean it up here as well. I don't think it's a bad point. I just would hold it until we get to the budget section.
Right. Well,
which won't be tonight. So, um, question, something
Yeah, can I ask, Norwood, so what about that do you have concerns with? Is it capital Oh, again, I think this is an instinctive sort of best practice and very much not having it read the budget sections, and I very much defer, uh, for that reason, but I if you have two different names for what is the same thing, that strikes me as having the possibility of creating confusion. I think, I'm assuming to Steve's point, part of what he's trying to tightrope here is terminology that is pre-existing, and so I, I totally understand that, but it's just something I want to flag. Um, and I'm, well, happy
And I have a problem with it. Yeah. And going through it, but I'd also, um, would probably want to talk to the CFO. I, Patsy, I have some recollection that he wanted both terms in here. I'm, I'm
Yeah, I believe that he did, yes.
This goes back to our December, January, uh, timeframe, and so a long time ago in the history of this charter revision, but, um, that's the other reason I want to, uh, look at it as well, so, um, so the next issue came up in the
Because one has not, one has nothing to do with the other. Budget has nothing to do with what's actually spent. That's, um, I would guarantee that's the CFO's basis.
That may be true. Yeah, uh, that, that could be, could be the rationale. So I just want to hold on that one. I don't think that, um, uh, I think we, we just need to take a look at that. Um, then the question on notice, meeting or hearing notice, should this align with public notice A through D requirements, uh? Um,
If you look at public notice, you've specified places where the notice must be made, which seems to me to be reasonable. It just seems to me, I would think we would want the same notice for a meeting notice as we would want for a public notice, potentially, or maybe not.
Exactly right. I think we should probably use the term public notice within the meeting notice definition. Uh, so we're not repeating things between the two or confusing them. Uh, let me try to align those sections.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Steve, is it possible to get one page on the screen instead of two?
Let's see, hold on.
Part of mine is cut off.
I may have to enlarge. Trying to make it a little bigger. Was that better?
I think so. I don't know what anybody else thinks, but
Much, much better.
Cool. All right. Yeah, so what I will do is I'll take a look at the definition. Uh, in the last sentence, there was an issue dealing with, uh, the question of statutes and regulations. I'll fix that as well. I, I think it's okay, but I, I'll make it a little clearer so that there won't be any question. Um,
Thanks.
And, uh, in public hearing, I will make a reference to common council, um, public hearing, um, uh, procedures. That's, uh, in, in, um, in aligned with the question about boards and commissions. Um,
Thanks, Steve.
In this sentence right here, we should make it clear that uh, these, this definition applies to the common council as well. So I'll make sure that is clarified completely. Referendum saying here, the budget is set forth. There's a question.
I'm just asking whether you want a defined term for budget that encompasses both operating or capital. That's, it's a minor point. I wouldn't. I don't think we need to discuss.
For you. I, these are references go to the section. I think it's okay. Um, because I, I I'll double check. The current referendum as to whether it applies to both capital and um, and uh operating. Uh, I'm I'm not sure. I will double check that. Um, and if it doesn't, we should use the defined term. Um, so I don't have an issue with that at all. I was trying to figure that out. Um, I'll clean up. There's a little issue in the issue of definition of regulation. Alright, so let's go to taxing districts. Any questions on any of the others? Uh, any other definitions, folks? And Nora raised question, council raised question regarding. Oh, I guess the question was, I indicated what the current practice was. Um, and I'll defer to Patsy on this one a little bit. We worked hard on this definition. Um, largely because we were trying to respect the jurisdiction of the tax districts. And not to make it look like we were trying to turn it into something else. And that's why I had the reference, contemporaneous rest reference to the time of the the adoption. As to a more general definition, because I didn't want to um. Uh, I didn't, I I don't think we wanted to look like we were imposing something on them. So um, I don't have strong feelings about that. Um, what? The council number raised the question was, should we just recognize? Should we just recognize that these?
Sorry, sorry. You were in my pocket.
This sounds like they're having a good time. The um, the um. Just to make the general reference and not have the contemporaneous um indication of where they are. Uh, right now, part of it was, we do expect that within two years, if you approve this and the the public approves it, there will be another charter revision. We, in our, in Patsy's transmittal letter, made it very clear that we think they really should uh participate. Uh, the council should should invite them in, let them know that there's an opportunity to clean up their portion of the charter. As you take a look at other substantive issues that you may want to look at. Um, and then we might be able to fix it then. Um, I don't have strong feelings either way. Patsy, do you have anything to say about that?
Well, uh, I guess I've had a lot to say about it through through this process that 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 I was trying to. Not have confusion with the public, which exists to a large extent about our taxing districts. The first, second, third, and sixth versus the the fourth and fifth and um, and um. Unfortunately, uh, there, they look the same in when you look at them. Uh, but the first, second, third, and sixth are all capitalized as the first taxing district of the city of Norwalk. And there's, it goes on to the rest of them. But uh, so that's helpful. But uh, the general public and a couple of our commissioners. Who were, uh, have not been in Norwalk uh for a long time. Were totally confused uh by the language used and we would search very hard to find something to explain it. And to uh assure the first, second, third, and sixth that um, that. That they need to start an action to, you know, to modernize their their charter, their parts of this charter as well. So that was the reason we did this.
Yeah, I mean, again, I am totally fine. You've clearly put a lot of thought into it. And if it makes the most sense this time to leave in sort of a reference to the current state, um, uh, makes sense to me.
Okay. The next issue was in the definition of vacancy. You wanted us to try to align it with the um succession. Narrow succession, the filling of vacancies, let's see.
Yeah.
Um. Because the vacancy section of three dash six kind of goes to the mechanics of filling the vacancy.
But there's also.
You have these definitions and those, those um, when the mayor, the uh in the office of mayor. I see.
Right, and it gets rather specific about the different vacancies. And we then make reference later to the vacancies, you know, as they're sort of enumerated there. And I just think the the beauty of what you've done with the definition sections, I just felt like this is one more thing that could be moved into definitions and. Uh, clean up yet further. It's three, six, A.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
Yeah.
Alright, so let me look at that and see if that, if I can make that work.
Awesome. I love these definitions. They're great.
Thank you.
So it's gonna make the whole thing so much easier to read.
Well, we worked hard on it, and I think it's going to be good for not only you on the council, but it'll be very good for the public to be able to take a look at this and. And uh, it had really understand it, so um. Uh, that's, that's. That's terrific. Um. I'm looking at some of these other things. There's some things that are not noted. Nora, you took out some language in, you proposed taking out language in two dash three A. Uh, let me go to it.
Yep, and again, this is, this is nothing I felt very strongly about, but just it felt duplicative to me. And I know that one of our goals was to get words out. And and this, yes, this sentence felt to me like. Well, first of all, I I I don't know about seeking to articulate it. It felt a little wishy washy. Um, and I actually think this is something we've done and done well. And I don't, um, I thought that the sentences before and after fully conveyed our point. So it's a minor issue. Just a few words we might save, or not, if people feel strongly about the language.
Anybody else have any thoughts on it?
Well, my own, I I like this section and I like what you're, what you're doing here. Um, with the, with the idea of what public trust, the purpose, those things. The. I guess this is later, it gets into the next paragraph. Question is. Do we need to, do we need to reference the code sections that deal with this? Uh, I know it was a code, the thirty-two, the the ethics board, those types of things here, or does that lock us in in some way?
It would lock us in. I would, I would um strongly recommend not. Uh, referring to ordinances, the ordinances should refer to the charter. It works the other way around. I uh, this simply mandates something you've already done. It mandates the creation of an ethics ordinance. So that some future council and mayor that really don't care about those things, uh, not that that would ever happen in Norwalk. Um, try to get rid of an ethics ordinance. This mandates that there shall be an ethics ordinance. And lays out the standards and recusal and all that um in the charter. So we don't have to, we don't need to reference it. We could, if you think it's helpful, David, uh, have a footnote. We have uh comments. If you see the bottom of the page, actually, the next page is a comment of the twenty twenty-three Charter Revision Commission. Um, if we think it's important, we could say at the time of the adoption of the charter, the ethics ordinance can be found in ordinance section, Bob.
I actually think that's a good idea, because again, this gets to uh the the the, you know. The general public being able to easily read the document and find the things that are most pertinent. Ethics is something that I think is 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 pretty pertinent. Um, and and I think that's a great way to solve it, because the footnotes can be updated as.
You can update that. I was just gonna say that when you were done. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Alright, so we'll add a footnote. Uh, no, I love that convention. Something, yeah.
I kind of also, along with uh uh my colleague, uh, you know. Eliminating that phrase is is not such a bad idea when we get into the conversation of of economy of language. Um, I think, you know, that could, that could be one that can go.
Okay, I'll take a look at those. I'm going through them and marking it up. And what I, as I told you, I'll have a markup for you. Um, shortly after this, no, not not tonight, uh, but in the next couple of days, I'll do a markup that comes back to you. With the uh consensus items that we've talked about this evening. If and if no one's objecting, I'm assuming there's consensus on the little things we're talking about here. Alright, the next. Comment, uh, is a subtitle question. I will take here, I will take care of the subtitle. Make sure that's put in. Um, meeting decorum. This is the section coming up here. Let me ask the councilwoman to explain what she was trying to say here, if that's okay.
Yeah, sure, of course. I think I had two, one very small comment, which was just that, um, I thought uh that. Some of this um language about the other party, uh, public bodies and various community groups. Um, I was a little con- confused and concerned about that, because friends, I. Are, I don't know what can, what's meant by community groups, um, since obviously this charter would not apply to. Um, groups that were not public bodies. Um, uh. So, and I'm not sure if if all of this is necessary, or if the phrase boards and commissions kind of covers everything that's implied there. Um, my larger comment was that um, I fully agree with this section. I think it's great to have there. But it is all phrased in the negative, so about how you an atmosphere of incivility and disrespect. And there's no positive statement as to, you know, we expect. Um, you know, what the, what the behavior is that we expect. So we expect people to be respectful of each other. We expect people to abide by time limitations. I don't know, just so I, again, putting that out there potentially if the. If there's thoughts on that from um the Charter Revision Commission as to. Any positive direction.
Members, I think, I think affirmative language is fine. I'll look at, some of this language in this section comes from Governor Rel's. Um, uh, Institute on Ethical Conduct, by the way. It's a really amazing initiative that the former governor has uh. Taken on herself. And so. Um, but I'll defer to 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 Patsy and the other commissioners.
Yeah, but I really, I really like.
Language.
Alright. Alright, I'll try not to be so grumpy next time. Alright, we'll fix that.
Um. Steve, ever, ever question, I want to jump you back a minute. I just saw a note that I wrote. I'm curious going back up to. Uh, the section where you were at uh recusal and violation. Is that, is this is a new section, correct?
Yes.
Your end notes, this is new. So a recusal. A public official or employee, is, does a recusal have to file a a disclosure with the town clerk? If a, if a council member needs to recuse from a vote, does that imply they have to? File something with the town clerk?
Uh. The recusal, this is more of a written recusal for public officials. I think on the council, we might be able to state. Something to the effect um, or make it clear on the record.
I think it's, it's, I bring it up because it's confusing, because we do have members who have. You know, and this happens on boards and commissions as well, who may have some interest in a vote that has come before them. And they recuse themselves. Does that need to be registered or filed a disclosure of some kind with the town clerk? Or is being on the record enough? I'm I'm curious about the implication of that in this section, when we're talking about ethics.
Yeah, uh, this. I I have, take a look and see where I took this from, what what other charter? It might have been for one of my charters where you actually have conflict of interest filings that have to be filed. Um, uh, do you have that under your ethics code? Do you have to file annually conflict of interest forms?
No, no.
Yeah, I think this um, this um assumes that. I think that what we need to do is, I'll try to come up with language that addresses specifics. So that if you're on a border commission or the council, you have to state your recusal clearly on the record of any proceedings. Um, as those proceedings arise, uh, if you're an employee, you should file probably some kind of written. A recusal with the town clerk. I think that makes sense, especially since you don't have um a standard. So I will, I will play with that language.
I just think, yeah, we need to, we need to make some clarity in that, in that area.
Very good catch. Thank you. Thank you, David. I'm really happy that I have a city council, the common council is actually reading the charter.
We're really happy to have a charter to read, a readable charter.
Yeah.
Good thing is you have a couple of lawyers here who really know how to read this kind of document.
I know, I'm feeling very, I'm feeling very, uh, you know, I'm second guessing myself all night here. Uh, but it's, no, I think it's a wonderful thing. And I just want to tell my commissioners, um, this is not a bad thing. This is a good thing, uh, that we have people really reading it, because this, this will make it a better document in the end. And that's what we're.
Speaking with the commission, I I, we feel the same. We want this to, we want this to pass. And we want it to be really useful and we want to be proud of it. So any of these catches are are a very good thing for us. To that end.
Yeah, no, no, I think this is wonderful.
And very, very much appreciated.
Well, and what I, what I said to Steve in my transmittal or in my, you know, email sending this, I, this is an extraordinary piece of work. I don't want any of this, uh, any of these catches to suggest that it is not. I cannot believe the amount um. That you all have changed this, have made this better, have made it coherent, the enormity of the task here. Um, it's incredibly impressive. And the fact that, quite frankly, any of it sort of functions is really quite a testament to the amount of time that you put in. So very much, I think it's the opposite. I was incredibly thrilled with how few kind of questions I had going through this. Because honestly, um, given what you were starting with, this is extraordinary.
Well, thank you, I'm on behalf of the commission, but you you gave me a great, great, great commission. It was just a outstanding group of people. I, you know, I work with a lot of commissions around the state. I've been very, very lucky with this commission. I don't want any of my other commissions that are listening to this. To have any feelings that I prefer one over the other. Uh, but this has just been an outstanding commission. So thank you for that.
I don't know if it was filed with the town clerk, but we did sign off um. Uh, NDAs on um the committee development block grant. I I don't know if that gets filed with town clerk. Maybe that's something that fits in there.
I think that that's because it's federal. It, those are federal grants. No, we have to do that through the RDA.
Thanks, thanks, David.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you should look at your code of, uh, look at your code of ethics and decide where you want to go. This was not. There were just a few standards that it, that really um are are laid out here. But um, you know, you have, you have a lot of flexibility with the code of ethics when it comes right down to it. Um, let's see what the next changes are that are not editorial. There's some duplicative language. We'll take care of that. Um. Uh, one of the points that uh, the council member made is in this section. Um, and I think we kind of explained this. A little bit, I I'll fix, I'll fix it. She actually had um, was, had better um, use of my definitions than I did. Um, in uh, looking at this section. So I'm really glad that she read my definitions and use them. Uh, but um. Let me explain the, we talked about this a little bit last week. But the the cooperation clauses, I have found that they have become useful in a lot of communities. Really give you as a legislative body, give the mayor as the chief executive. Um, give the citizens uh an ability to point to a section of the charter that says you are supposed to. Do this. You're supposed to cooperate. You're supposed to work together. And I I just think the, the the more defined that is, the better off we are. And and uh, and so uh, she actually made a couple of really good changes there. Or is recommending some good changes, which you will see when I um, send the document back to you next week.
So, and I think my only question, and I'm fully agree. I think these are great clauses. I'm very excited to them, to have them in there. I think my only question was whether. Um. So this, so C applies only to cooperation and compliance with open meetings. And then two point seven is the more general clause that requires cooperation on other matters. Is that the?
There is a distinction, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that was, just having them come so close together.
Yep. And then you'll find another one, you'll find another one in the board and commission section. Maybe we should look at them, keep it in. And then you'll find another one, you'll find another one in the board and commission section. Maybe we should look at them, keep it in the back of our heads. To see whether we can merge them all. I thought this is one of those cases where repetition was not a problem. Where repetition was probably uh a mantra is not a bad thing sometimes.
I totally, and I I think, and the importance obviously of open meetings compliance makes it worth highlighting. So I'm all for it. I just wanted to double check.
Okay. That is pretty much it on Article Two, but let me see what my. What I have in my PowerPoint, if there's anything else I wanted to add. Hold on a second, let me get back to the PowerPoint. Here it is. So definitions, we did definitions, we did this. Article three, okay, so now we're in Article Three. I'll bring the, I'll bring the other thing back up, I'm sorry. Because that's actually very useful to have. The charter itself in front of us. So, and this is not the version that Nora marked up. This is a clean version. Uh, eight, the next version of the document. Let me see what we have here. So this is a big section. I'm sure you're gonna have, we'll have some conversation. On a broad, on broad issues here. Um, let me see any substantive comments that. Nor brought up here. Oh, she added register voters. Yes, register voters are elected public officials. I don't know why we left them out, but they're, she's got them back in. Is there listed otherwise here? So that was an omission. Oh, the definition of executive level appointees. You know, that's a term that I came up with as we were drafting this and I. I I'm not sure, what I, what I'll do is let's reserve thought on it until we get to the department section. Uh, to see whether it's a term that really does need to be segregated, um, because. That it came up because I think there were some. People appointed by the mayor that are not department heads, and I think that's where I came up with the term. But let's, when we get to the executive, I will make a note here to revisit after we look at departments.
Yeah, I I'd like to just highlight something under C, elected public officials. Um, and that is the seven constables. Um, we had a lot of of comments on whether uh we should make any changes there. And I've received several more after uh recently, uh, the concern being that. The ballot, um, uh, the number of of uh spots on the ballot requires that you turn over the ballot to vote. And that is, many people think that's very um. Uh, confusing, and there is, has been one suggestion in order to. Change that would be to uh reduce the number of constables. And I'm just throwing that out to you for information and we can think of what we want to do about that, what you would like to do.
Any thoughts on that?
Uh, well, I'd be curious, I know you said you all interviewed them and and found that they did serve. Um, still still have an important role to serve. Did you get any sense from them as to whether they thought seven folks were needed to fill that role or whether?
It it did sort of came up and and one particular person said that she uh has never had any call to do anything. And wasn't really sure um what it was all about and um. Basically was on the ballot because somebody had asked her to be on the ballot. So, uh, but several of the other constables say. That they do a lot of business and service uh for the city and and local attorneys. So the question is, do we need seven or or how many would we um be able to have without having to turn the ballot over? And is turning the ballot over uh that much of a burden for the city and the voters or not? So I just want to highlight that discussion. I'd like some input.
And and maybe too that. Is it just one per district and we only have five instead of seven? Like what, where did that number seven come from?
I I have no knowledge of that. And the and the city sheriff, um, we did, um, I believe in another section. We're going to sunset that office and uh after the twenty twenty five election, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, so that position would be something, the current sheriff. Uh, does similar thing as the constable and came to uh the meeting and and said that. You know, he would like to remain as sheriff and he thought it was important, so. That was the compromise that we came up with.
It appeared that from the testimony that some of the constables have business, others do not. It largely depends on their relationships with lawyers, with the probate court, which I think is a principal source of a lot of their. Their business, um, and um, so. I'm not sure there's a mark, you know, it it did not appear that the market supported seven, but. Um, we'll leave that to you.
Training.
Right.
That was one of the issues for the people especially who had no work. They didn't know what they were supposed to be doing because they had not had training. In being. A constable. So the people that did have work had been there for a lot, much longer period of time where had been elected for, you know, over years. And the newer people really didn't know what they were to do. So that was, that was an issue too. So I'm, I guess I'm just saying, I don't know if it's, they're not needed or they just don't know what to do. And once they got trained, could get the work that that they need to function.
I I believe the president had a question.
Uh, yes, thank you, Steve. The question I direct to yourself is, uh, do you have any guidance based upon experience? With other towns or cities in terms of. Uh, how, do they have the constable role or similar function? And if they do, how do they distribute that um responsibility across their cities?
Most, many of my communities do not have constables uh any longer. Uh, Fairfield last year, uh, in the failed charter. Tried to get rid of the con, they were trying to turn the constables from appointed, elected to appointed um officials. Uh, because it was determined that about the only source of their work was probate court and the probate court. Thought they didn't need more than three or four of them, and I think they had seven, if I'm not mistaken, as well. Um, but for the constables that have business, they they find it a useful public position to hold. Um, and I'm not saying that in any derisive way. Um, one of the things I thought about, and I think we talked about a little bit. Um, and Benita referred to it uh a moment ago is. Uh, training, um, is it something? I I I don't want the Corporation Council to despise me for raising this. Is this something that the Corporation Council should take responsibility for? Are there papers the constables can be serving on behalf of the municipality? I think we found that there was very little of that. Uh, Patsy can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think the sheriff was getting any work from the city. Uh, because the city, force of work for the constables and the sheriff. Um, and um, you know, uh, it it, so I think the commission was in a quandary when it came down. Uh, to it and and ultimately uh left it status quo. But i- it would be hard to. To uh argue that these are seven very busy public servants. And then the other issue I had with regard to all of them. Um, and we could look into this issue a little bit more is liability. If a constable gets into trouble, the constable um uh trespasses, goes into a property that he or she should not be entering. Um, are we dealing with the full faith and credit of the municipality of the town, of the city? Um, by virtue of having them out there, especially if they're untrained, to the neatest point one more time. So, um, so I think there was a um. Uh, unanswered questions and and you know, you can, you can't deal with every issue as as substantial as you'd like to. Uh, I think that's probably the reason Patsy raised it tonight.
Yeah, I just wanted to educate you folks to what we had discussed, and then the question is. Um, where did this uh come from that you can only vote for four out of out of the?
That's in the current charter.
I know, I know, but but where did, what's the rationale for that? It's basically what I'm asking. We never figured that out.
Probably has to do with minority party representation is my guess, I don't know. Um, but because a lot of provisions, when they have something like that, it says that each party can nominate no more than. Whatever it is, uh, no more than four or something like that, so um. Uh, that's usually the end of that kind of section. Uh, we didn't change that for these purposes. So that's a, that's a question for the council to think about. Uh, right, that's, I I think that's why.
Yes, yeah, I'd like input, yeah.
So we don't need to have it resolved tonight, but why don't you think about it? Um, you know, uh, we're not going to resolve every issue. In the section this evening and um. Did David, did I see David's hand up a moment ago? Or did we get that, was that on the last?
You you did, I'm. I'm torn on this issue and trying to figure out sort of what I feel. I I think. Benita's comment is pretty important that if you were, you know, we're not training someone to do something that they've been. Elected to do, which then gets into what you said, Steve, which is, you know, a liability issue. Um. I sort of like the suggestion of one, you know, maybe we sunset it down to one per district. And it, you know, we have a uh commission in two years that may look at it again then, or in five, five years after that. In seven years, look at this again, so. But I'm I'm not a hundred percent yet.
All right, why don't you take that, that's an issue that's on your side of the table. Everything's on your side of the table, but that's one. We probably won't resolve in this discussion, um, and I'll make a note that that's a talking item right now. All right, we talked about the executive level appointees in F. All right, so. So here we are at the term of office. I guess this is um an issue. That is a major issue. The the commission has asked that you make the four-year term. Um, a separate question, that's of course you're, they were not trying to be presumptuous. I think they were trying to be um. Affirmative and and helpful in terms of their thinking um on the issue from a political perspective, but ultimately. The form of the questions is a call for the council, um, and there are several uh elements to the four-year term. Um, one is the term doesn't uh take effect until after the twenty twenty seven election. But something that does take effect before the twenty twenty seven election is uh a new. Uh, term of office, uh, start date, commencement date of the first business day of January following the election. Which extends it from the current very short period of time, which the mayor reminded us was two weeks. Um, and moves it out to the first Monday of January immediately following the election. In 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 concert with that, we created a transition period, a transition office. So that if there is a new mayor, uh, the mayor would have dedicated space. Uh, reserved in City Hall to work on the transition, to build an administration. Uh, that will come in after uh the first um business day in January. At the same time, members of the council and the. Board of Education, regardless of whether there's a new mayor or not. Um, would have a place where they could go in City Hall, particularly with the change in the commencement date. So that during that period of time, they could be educated on uh budget issues and other active legislative matters. That is, that are before the common council or the board of education, if they're elected to the board of education. Um, those are the two major, and then there's some restrictions on what the mayor can do during that period of time as well. So, uh, I don't know if there are any, nor I'm looking here, uh.
My only question was just, um, it, I'm not totally sure why three is separate from one. Unless they actually, there's, they've already started, they already start in January now and it's not.
No, because they're they're in different election years. The uh red stars are elected in the even numbered years.
Ah, okay.
All right, that's why they're separate.
Great, that makes sense. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments, any question of councilmember Ayers, Ayers?
Thank you, and I might, I might be reading into this too much or not. Fully understanding, but with this transitioning time, um, moving it to January. That is right, and I know you were not in the budget section, but our budget cycle starts way before January. So I know you said about allocating space in City Hall for someone to catch up, but. Who would orchestrate that? That was number one. Number two. I think we do our first round, our first budget discussions in February, you really do need thirty, more than thirty days. To really, the budget book is over three hundred pages, so you you need a substantial amount of time. To not only get through that information, but digest it so that you're able to even form a question. Or look at something. So my my concern is that January start date, because you're coming already in the middle. Of the budget season. Um, would it, could it be possible to make it a December? Start date that's at least giving people a little bit more time to process that information before you're being pulled into. Committee meetings, before you're being asked questions, before constituents are um. Um, addressing their concerns, at least gives you a little bit more time to digest that information.
Um, so up on the screen is a little chart that I created um regarding these. These uh, these types of provisions, let me speak from personal experience, if I might, uh, because I I sat not in your seats in Norwalk, but in a seat. In New Haven for ten years, so I was elected for a first time, like everybody else is elected for a first time at one point. Um, in New Haven, historically, New Haven, as you see, is January first. They don't care whether it's a business day or not. They want to start on the new year, the the New Year's Day and um, and uh. And yeah, the budget process, the administration of the budget process could start as early as September. I think we have in our provision a joint budget hearing uh at the beginning of the process. Stanford is actually looking in the same way. At a joint budget process early in in um the fall. Uh, which means that the lame duck members of your body would be part of that process. Um, and so, um. I found myself coming in and I did not have a transition. The mayor had transitioned in New Haven, but Alders did not, and so I had a. You know, almost ten week period where I was an alder elect and alderman elect at the time, um, where I had very little. Uh, knowledge, no access whatsoever uh to this. And so one of the things we wanted to be very clear on. Uh, was that it's not just for the mayors, it's for Board of Education and for members of the council. You're not going to get the budget for a while, but if, as long as you have access. Um, and a space, and maybe we should designate somebody who's responsible, whether it's the town clerk. Or somebody else or the the CFO, whoever it is, needs to provide. Uh, if for education, it should be the superintendent of schools, frankly, um, who is the chief administrator for for that department. Um, should be providing them with relevant information that all members of the council would be entitled to ask for. So whatever you're asking for, um, in October, November, December normally, which in my experience is not much. Um, except new members might be interested in looking at things so that they have some education. So they're not reading, um, you know, they're not reading, um, uh, Cicero. Uh, in the original language, uh, that they're reading, they're reading a language they understand. So I get that. Um, but I'm not sure you get much more out of having a date. I think the conclusion, and I'll defer to the members of the commission. I think the conclusion was you don't get much more out of being, having your hand on the Bible in December as opposed to January. And you get a better start period for an administration that has, you know, in a big city, and you're a good sized city. Um, it it it's not, it's not easy to put together an administration in two weeks or even three weeks or four weeks that if going into. Uh, December, I think that was the dilemma, and I think that's the reason the commission moved in the direction they did.
I I, you know. I appreciate that, but I just want to add for thought. Um. I'm all about a diverse. Common council, not, I'm not talking about the mayor's office, a diverse common council with people from multiple or different backgrounds. And different educational levels and stuff, because I think we should be a representative body. So we should represent everybody in our thing, and so I think we should be cautious. That everybody does not come to this table, this August body with the same. Ability and skill set. That doesn't mean they won't get there. Um, we just don't all start with the same ability and skill set, and so. I I do understand that you do have to um start. And and sometimes you started and you you're running on your. And, and sometimes you started and you, you're running on your feet, you're learning on your feet. Um, I think for the first six months, I was messing up stuff, and I still mess up stuff. But I think that. For me and my colleagues will say what they want to say, that January start. It, it just doesn't, we get elected in November. I think we got sworn in like the second week of November. Why not December? Why not push it back just a little bit? Or maybe you could do on a tier, the mayor comes in and uh, do something and the common council does something else. I don't know why they have to. Simon Tastly be together, or you could put them together. I don't know. But I think if you're thinking about people, just people. With different abilities in, in backgrounds, that it would benefit people. To maybe give them a little bit more cushion time, but I'll let others speak on the topic.
I, I hadn't thought about it, um, but since you raised it, keep in mind, Congress comes in three weeks for the president. Um, so, but I, I, I've not seen that in any. Other community. That doesn't mean it can't be done, but I just wanted to point that out for the, for the record. Um, that's the case. And I, and I do want to say one last thing. This is anecdotal and, and shut me up if you'd like. But I was a twenty nine year old kid when I came out and I was a lawyer and I thought I was really a bright young man. Um. For the first six months, nine months, I had no idea what I was doing. I was, I, I didn't understand the language of legislation. I didn't Parliament procedure. New language for everybody. Uh, and, and, uh, and so I appreciate your point completely, but I just wanted to point out. It wasn't, it was a new language for, for somebody who thought he was politically. You know, adept. And so, um, so I appreciate that comment. Anybody else have any comments? I see the commissioner, Benita?
Yeah, I, I think that one of the considerations too, and it's just to throw it out there was the holidays. Uh, the Thanksgiving and then the holidays that happen at the end of December. And trying to coordinate. That with the start dates. Basically, it was, there was a sense of, of. A feeling that sometimes things really don't get done that much in those. You know, hot, during those holidays. That was another consideration, just to think about it.
Madam Chair. Patsy?
Um, yeah, I, I had, I struggled with this recommendation. Um. Uh, having served on the council, uh, like fifty years ago, it's hard for me to remember what I, what I thought in the beginning. I, I think I was very excited. But um, the, most of the, the uh, comments that were made by staff and other professionals. Was the need to have the amount of time to put your staff together. But um, I had always thought in terms of the electors and what they expect. They. They vote somebody new in, they want to see them start doing the work that they were hoping that they would be able to do. So um. It's, it, it's a tough call here in my personal uh, feeling. Uh, and I was more in favor of the December time than the January. But that's, that's what happened there. So it's just my personal input.
So we'll leave that to your, your thoughts and judgment. Uh, council member Revellis?
Um, to the point of what was just stated with Councilwoman Ayers. Um, and what she just said. Um. One of the fortunities that I have in. Dealing with some of the work that I do is the fact that we always try to consider. Um, what was difficult for us coming up or what um, didn't our, you know, um. What did our, and um, our elders not show us, or how can we make it more um. Of an easier transition for children younger than us or people younger than us, right? So I'm just saying, with everything that was just said, and particularly with the misunderstanding of the first few years for um, first few months, so on. It's, it is, it's a. It's a, it's a shaky time, but I was just, I just wanted to back up and to say, whatever we can do to probably. Make that. In learning what was hard for us and understanding our fumbles, so that we just make it easier in the transition for someone new, depending on whatever background they come from, like there was stated. I think is um. Kind of where uh, Councilwoman Ayers is going, because I understand the state, story you're saying, but what could we do? To make even at your, at your regard, you said you, you know, lawyer and you thought you were savvy and still figuring it out, like. What were the little things we could help say and do to make it that much easier for someone like? Myself, who never thought that politics would even be in her life, you know what I mean? So I just wanted to say that part, just because of what you just eloquently said, but like, how do we not make that such a struggle for the next person to come? In twenty twenty five, for example. That's all.
Thank you. Patsy, is your hand still up for a reason or?
No, no, I guess I just didn't undo me.
So think about that section. We don't have to resolve it this evening. Um, should there be, should it be more robust? Should we um? Should we have um? Uh, other players in there? Should we mention they have access to the CFO? Access to the town clerk, whoever, or the city clerk. Uh, is really the clerk of the, of the council. Um, you know, the, it, it says that the outgoing mayor needs to be helpful. Um, should we have other officials, the superintendent for the board of education? So think about those types of things, uh, because we might be able to bolster that transition period. With a very clear burden on the part of, uh, and we do have the corporation council, chair of the board of education. President of the council all need to be helpful. Should there be other officials uh, listed there as well? Uh, any comments on term of office? We're. Okay with that?
Yeah, I, Steve, that's a mirror rolling. Um, I still. Am concerned that. With a four year term for mayor, and I thought we were going to make it effective. Uh. Twenty seven. It looks like what the document I have says twenty five. Um. But also. Um, I, I don't know how we're going to structure it if the. Mayor gets a four year term and the council gets a two year term. And every other year, or every. Other year, we're going to have a, an election where there's this council and board of ed members running. It's going to be kind of difficult.
Well, I'm glad you raised it. Um, the uh. Yeah, in my, it says the twenty twenty seven is the four year, after the four year, the mayor's term begins after the twenty twenty seven election.
Yeah, the document I have says twenty seven, twenty five, I'm sorry. Maybe mine's wrong.
I hope not. What section are you looking at, mayor?
Oh, boy, you asked me to go back and find that.
Oh, no, you don't have to do it right now.
Yeah, it's an item, it's uh, item two on page nineteen. It's there.
There's a conflict? But it says twenty twenty seven.
Yeah, but the, the transition, the one above says twenty five. Following.
Oh, the transition period is twenty twenty five. Yeah, the transition period is twenty five. Um, because I don't.
I misread that, I'm sorry.
Yeah. But the mayor doesn't get the four year term until twenty, after the twenty twenty seven cycle.
Right, exactly.
But the mayor has now raised the question, do we want to consider, does the council want to consider? Um, having the four year term. And I see, I see council member Revellis, um, am I pronouncing your name right?
I, um, yes, that's fine. I just want to, because my kids in the back, I'm so sorry, I had abruptly stopped. I just want to finish my point in saying that I agree with December being the start date for new people con boring. Onboarding and just because of what you said, yes, I agree with the mayor. I think it would be a hard offset. If the council's not at the same time with the mayor, but I also understand the stagnant of four years. Being the fact that we just said with the onboarding or how to start a council group, I think it also takes a lot longer than this two years to figure out what you're doing. And then having to get reelected as well. So getting the um, footing, the six years, just getting the footing, I think it makes more sense for both the mayor and the council's work. Um, on a four year span, but I just wanted to finish my um. Ver, my thought, because my eldest just abruptly screamed behind and I didn't want to talk. Over that, but um, I just wanted to say that I, I, I agree with maybe going to a December. So thank you. I appreciate you uh, taking me back on.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? Uh, so we have the. The, I, I was focusing on the four year term right now. Any other? Comments on the four year term for council? Was there something you want to think about, not act on tonight?
Well, I don't think you can act on it tonight. I think it's food for thought. My concern again is low voter turnout. And you then have. Uh, fifteen council members running and four or five board of ed members. Um, that's not usually enough to generate. A big voter turnout.
Mayor, do you want, let me tell you what happened in Hartford because of the low voter, voter turnout. Um. There, and we're doing this in New Haven as well. Where we're moving toward the four year term, the board of Alders is now considering it. Um, and they are, they've put off the four year term. Until all. The officials can align. Right now, the two elected members of the board of education in New Haven. Have four year terms. But we're going to have to create a um. Uh, a one, a, a two, a transitional two year term for one of the board of ed members. So that we can align all of the elections. In one cycle. So.
Yeah, that makes sense.
The entire board of ed, the entire council and the mayor. All run on a four year term in one cycle.
Yeah, that, I mean, that makes perfect sense. I know they talk about, well, um, you know, the entire. Board of Ed can be. Uh. Up for uh, election if we did it that way, entire board event up for election at the same time as the council. Uh, but it's, you know, they can be, they could all be replaced, but quite frankly. Uh, the entire council could be replaced. Uh, in a two year election or in a four year election, if the voters decided that's it. So there's always a risk of the entire. Body being replaced, and we actually have seen that happen.
All right. So I, I just wanted to explain that, that, I mean, you could do it any way you want, but I'm just telling you that, that's where New Haven is. Hartford's moved toward that because Hartford found in its experiment for the last. Twenty years, having the board of ed on a different cycle, they thought would generate. Enormous excitement and activity. Um, and twenty years later, uh, they've eliminated it and they're moving it into a, a one cycle for, for all candidates.
Well, yeah, the alignment that you mentioned makes perfect sense.
Okay.
But, you know, I, I, I'll defer to uh. Uh, the council.
And I see council member Smith has uh, her hand up.
Yeah, um, thank you, Steve. Uh, yeah, I, 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 I have some concerns as well, uh, just to. Echo what the mayor says um, about low voter turnout and that off year um, for a two year term for the council. Um, I see both sides of a two year, four year term for the council. I see the benefits of both and then, and the. Uh, cons of both as well. So, you know, I'm not ready to make a strong statement on that, but I really do have concerns. About four year for the mayor and two year for the council.
Can I ask members of the council, if they may? Talk to their colleagues on the board of education. One of the things I don't want, that I would strongly recommend against. Is, remember, we, we're trying to avoid real structural changes and, and we kind of isolated. The four year term for the mayor in the cycle, recognizing completely. That we're also asking you to do a charter revision in the interim that could ultimately align with a twenty twenty seven four year term. Um, if you were to adopt it. Uh, in the next two years. Um. I, I, I don't want to have a situation if we want to go toward a full alignment. Where the board of education constituency. Um. Raises its tackles uh, over that kind of issue. So I would suggest that members of the council talk to their colleagues and friends. On the board of education. Take their temperature and see whether this makes any sense. That's my only. Uh, we're in a public meeting and I'm stating it publicly, but I, I think it's an important. Uh, matter to take into account because we want to make sure that we avoid, um. Uh, I, I think it's a sensible idea. I think the mayor's raised a really good point. Um. Um, and if we want to talk about further, I'll give you my thoughts on it at some point. Uh, but I think we should talk to the board of ed and make sure that they're comfortable with the alignment. So I, I'm just asking each of you who know people to do that. I, I am not politically. Connected in the city. I mean, I could do it as a matter of due diligence, but you'll probably get a better answer or an easier answer, a more honest answer, probably.
Hmm.
I see the minority leader has a question?
Uh, oh, that, just a comment, actually. I served on the school board for about five years and. One of the dynamics I think that worked with that was the staggered terms.
Hmm.
Between at large and in district. We always had continuity. There was never. A full slate of nine coming in. It, it was five and four, five and four. It could go one way or the other, but um. It seemed to work. There were. People who knew how to. You know, coach new people on the board and. It, it's a good system over there. Thanks.
And so the at large ones in one cycle and the district in the other?
Yeah, that's how it's working now.
Right. And, but with, with a two year term, there's always a mayor at the top of the ticket. Would that change? Would that change from your perspective? If the, one of those classes. Is on its own in um, an election cycle without anybody else on the ticket?
Uh, I don't know. I, I thought I heard the mayor comment that we have swept the, the board has been swept in prior years and. Or, or other boards and, you know, it's just a lack of continuity in city governance. I think when you get all new members in all at once.
Well, I'm not making an argument. I'm just, I was just curious about what your thoughts were if um. Uh, there was a low turnout election with that.
And, and that, that could, that could be the difference in the world would. You have a low turnout. Right now, during a mayoral election, um, we're lucky if we get fourteen thousand five hundred people. Out of a fifty thousand voting block. So I'm just thinking what it would be like if there's no mayor at the head of the uh, uh, ticket. And there's uh, four. Uh, board of ed members. And fifteen council members. The entire council could be replaced. And like I said, it has happened. Um, I believe it has happened. Um, under Alex Knop's term, I think he had a fifteen member uh, uh, council. Now, I don't think it might not have been, everybody got swept out. But he did, you know, it was all uh, one party. So I don't, I don't, you know, I, it's just like, like you said, Steve, I'm throwing it out there for thought.
Okay. Uh, the, um, does council member Revellis still have a question, or is her hand just still up from the last? Question?
My apologies. I thought it was slower. Sorry.
No, it's okay. I didn't want to ignore you. Any other comments from?
Thank you.
The members? Then let's uh, let's move, let's see what the next issue is. Uh, the next issue is the issue we talked about. A little earlier. Um. Was the, uh, which I, I promised I would look at under vacancies. Uh. Under vacancies where we, I'm going to try to align the definition. This language. Or, well, it ends a little earlier, but um, the, basically this language. I will try to look at it in the definition section to make sure it aligns. Or that's used properly so we, we don't um. Cause any confusion. Trying to take a look at uh. Other sections. Let me, uh, let me do raise, I do think, let me just check. In the document, did I take them out or not? Three dash seven. Okay, uh, I think. Okay. In your documents, uh, members of the council, I have highlighted throughout the. The, the, this is not uh, your colleague who added this highlight. This is me. Um. The, uh, uh, we have a defined term for majority vote of the council. So that does not have to be redefined each time. It's a, it's a defined term. Right up in the front of your document. Uh, throughout the document, we have different voting standards. Um, this is a unique standard. Um, this is a action to. Um. Uh, to uh, replace the mayor in the case of a vacancy. And it's a very high standard, requires an affirmative of, of twelve members of the common council present and voting. Uh, but twelve members is a big number. Uh, so if this two members absent, it's twelve or thirteen. So it's a pretty substantial. Uh, majority and it should be a substantial majority if you're going to do something of this nature. So I'm not highlighting this for the purpose of saying this shouldn't be the standard. But I want you, as you're going through the document. To look at the different standards. This may not be the best example, but to look at the different standards and think. Um. Is that okay? Or should we just have the majority standard that's in the definition? You see my point? I just want to make sure. I want, I want your advice and coun, uh, council on that. I left them, uh, I left them, um. The commission left them up in the air. The commission left them up in the air because we didn't feel, we weren't sure we could get a consensus until we got to you. And so I want you to think about the majority vote, obviously, is an affirmative vote of at least a majority of the members present and voting at which a quorum is present. That's the standard definition. The issue is, as you're going through the document and look at the different standards, whether or not there should be a different standard. And maybe it's something leadership should take a look at. But I ask each one of you to to do that as you go through the document, if that's okay. That I wanted to make that point as we start this process. There was a question raised regarding compensation of the acting mayor, if the mayor is is temporarily disabled from serving as mayor. And the answer is that there is no payment for the acting mayor until you reach a period of thirty days. I'm correct on that, Patsy?
Yes, that's right. That's what we had decided, yeah.
Good. So is there a question on that, Nora?
I did have a question on that. I could see the argument of not paying, and it sounds like you discussed it, so I'd be very interested to hear your thoughts. I could see the argument of not paying, you know, if the council president has to step in for three days, but you know, if you have to step in for even two weeks. I mean, either the council president is gonna have to, you know, take a temporary leave of absence from their current job. I mean, it that that goes from, you know, something that is a volunteer position to being a full time position. So I just, thirty days felt like a long time to ask someone to take that role without pay was my instinct, but it sounds like you all have discussed it. So if you had thoughts to the contrary.
Does anybody from the commission want to talk about that?
I, I don't recall a lengthy conversation on that point. I really can't recall any specifics, so I don't know if anyone else can. We were more concerned about other aspects of of vacancies related to the mayor and and worked on that piece, which is coming up a little bit later.
So the, so my experience as a former pro tem, president pro tem, in the line of succession for a mayor, I actually served as mayor for three or four days when back in the day in the eighties and nineties, when we didn't have the kind of communication we had. If the mayor was at a National League of Cities meeting in Denver or and and the president of the board went with the mayor, I was the mayor. And although I usually like to go to those meetings myself. But, you know, and and frankly, being mayor for that short period of time is not a meaningful position. In all the times I served as mayor, I'm not sure I ever set foot in the mayor's office. I think I almost gave the mayor's secretary a heart attack by writing a letter calling for the resignation of the school superintendent. And I told her to rip it up before she sent it out. But that was the the most activity I spent. I did, I think I had to sign some documents, but they brought them to my office. So I didn't have to go there. Now, if you have a more extended period where the mayor is truly incapable of, you know, there's an incapacity. And in the modern world, going to a U S Conference of Mayors meeting should not be deemed an absence. If the mayor is able to talk to the chief of staff, and I think we define that as well, or the president of the council, the mayor is not absent in in the modern world. That is just not the same as it was thirty years ago or twenty five years ago. So I I think the sense was that the long term, whether thirty days is the right time, whether two weeks is the right time, that I think is a judgment call. So, you know, the council has this before them. You can make a judgment. Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I think Nora brings up a really important point. You can't make an assumption that your council president is retired or unemployed or whatever. In fact, most everyone on this council is is employed full time and I I think that thirty days is a long time to go without some kind of compensation if you're in a position of taking leave of absence, if indeed you can take a leave of absence from your, your, your job, right? But I I think it's something really worth taking another look at.
That's your, it's in your court, so I think the commission would be open to any suggestions you might have.
Yeah. Steve, if I could ask a question just for a point of information. So if the mayor is unable to perform or is removed from office for malfeasance or something, are you saying the council president serves until the next election? Or are you saying that? I I thought according to state statute, there would be a, an interim election in order to fill the position, but I may be wrong.
Yeah, I think the way this works, let me take a look at it. Is the, well, I mean, this is, this is the temporary absence, so there would not be an election at this point.
Right.
It would be in in case of a permanent situation. I think the president would serve until a special election is held. And if in that case, I don't believe that the thirty days applies. I'm taking a look at that. I'll take a look, I can't find it right now. Action by. Yeah, but that's, that's, that's a vacancy. That's where the whenever vacancy occurs, the president will succeed until successor is elected and qualified. At the next biennial election for the remainder of the term. So the way we're setting it up in the charter is they serve the successor, the president of the council succeeds until the next biennial election, so that if you're in the middle of the term, somebody would run for the remainder of the mayor's four year term, if there's a four year term. If it's a two year term, then they hold office until the end of the term.
Yeah, because sometimes, as Barbara's pointed out, or Ms. Smith pointed out, that could be challenging because everybody, virtually everybody on the council is 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 full time employed. And if they are unable to say, they say, well, I can't do it. Then I, where would it go?
You'd have to elect a new president.
Okay.
What would happen is, look, I think that when, when you, you have a very interesting cultural tradition of having these one year presidencies, you don't have presidents elected for the full term of your council. So it's a little different than Congress legislature or a lot of other city councils throughout the state where the leadership is elected for the term. And so if you're running for council president, one of the things that you're knowledgeable of is that you may succeed into the seat of mayor. And you know, so you have to make a judgment call. Is this something I want to do? And, you know, it doesn't happen often. I I'm trying to think of when it's happened. I'm trying to think of my lifetime when I've seen this happen anywhere in Connecticut. But I think it happened in Bridgeport, but a long, long time ago. But I I just can't remember a council president succeeding to the mayoralty, but that would be the the mentality of it. You see it in the smaller towns where first select people leave and the they, they, they elect somebody from the Board of Selectmen to replace the first select person. But I'm trying to think of a situation where it's occurred in my forty years of experience around the state. I'm really pondering it right now and I just, oh, Waterbury. Waterbury had, when the mayor went to prison, I'm sorry, in the nineteen nineties, when Giordano was forced to resign, there was a replacement. President of the Board of Alders replaced the mayor in Waterbury during that period of time. He just chose to stay on. He had some flexibility in his job, but knew that, especially with the mayor they had and with the problems that they were facing, that that he might actually be mayor. So that was an active situation where everybody knew there was a federal investigation. And I think this person ran because and was elected president because people thought that that person could ultimately serve as mayor.
Did it happen in Bridgeport, too?
Yes, you're right. It did. John Fabrizi, yes, I'm sorry, Fabrizi. In fact, I started doing work with Fabrizi. How could I forget, John? And a great guy and a nice man. And yes, he succeeded as well. He was a school teacher and he was president and he just moved from one a public service job to another, basically is what occurred there. So it has happened. Thankfully for our mayors, few and far between. Long live the mayor. So that's something, I see that the president has a.
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, sure. Thank you, Betsy. Just a quick question, you know, the, the entity that makes the final determination that the mayor is in, you know, in not capable of discharging his or her duties? Who makes that final determination?
The council. You guys.
Majority by two thirds vote?
It's an affirmative vote of twelve members of the common council present and voting. So it's a firm, hard twelve members. So it's not two third. It's twelve members present voting. So if you have, if you only have eleven members at the meeting, you can't, you can't, you can't act. You need, it's a very hard twelve votes. Mayor, just a few minutes ago, it's the one I pointed out, you need to look at all of these voting requirements, but for a for a decision to make a permanent decision of that nature, I think the, the thought was and and the provisions and other charters are very, very strict. So, but again, that's your call. It's something you should think about.
Okay, thank you.
And Steve, also, if you look at three nine C, I think there's, unless I'm misreading it again, that's a conflict. But that says two thirds.
That's a removal of the mayor for misconduct or neglect of duty versus incapacity.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're two different concepts there. Because neglect of duty is two thirds of the entire membership, so that you have that standard. And we could align those two standards. But they are different, they're different actions. The concept of negligence and misconduct are not personal in the sense when you're saying that a mayor is incapable of serving in office, doesn't have the capacity to know what he or she is thinking or doing. I think the stricter standard of having the twelve locked in number, you know, the concept of having that kind of locked in number is important. You can do whatever you want. You could have the two thirds standard in both cases. But I really think you guys need to think about it in terms of you, you are the legislators in terms of your operation day to day. What numbers make sense for you? If you see a strict standard, I wouldn't loosen it. But I would try to have maybe a consistent standard, but there is that distinction. You could align those two, those two things, but they're, they're distinct because they're different types of value judgments that the council has to make.
Gotcha.
So there was a method to our madness. I think Patsy has her hand up.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just thinking, if we move forward with a four year term for the mayor and the mayor is incapacitated, you know, with with a stroke, say, a month into the term, what, what triggers reelection? I mean, to have, expect somebody to step in as a president for the, for the full term. Doesn't make sense, and I don't remember our discussion.
The biennial election. So if it was a month into the term, it would be, they'd be mayor for about eighteen months. They'd be mayor until.
Yeah, because the Board of Ed has a different trigger, correct? Where, where you get so many months in and then I'm just trying to remember where it is in the charter and I, it's not coming to me right now. It's been a long day, so I'm not I'm not fast on my feet here.
Your pick by the town, your successors are picked by the town committee.
But there, there's another section, yeah.
If there's a vacancy, the town committee of the party of the person who left the board becomes the member of the body.
Well, I don't know if anybody else is thinking about that. That length of time for somebody to step in without an election seems like a long time.
Yeah, I mean, you could go strict state statute, but then you really have the issues of when does it occur? New Haven has a, if something happens within six months, you do it this way, you know, or if you do it for the first eighteen months this way, last six months the other way. You could do that kind of breakdown, but I think that I thought we decided that it would be the next by, with a four year term in particular. It would be for the last, you'd be running for the last two years, but the president would be effectively acting as, as, as would be the acting mayor during that period of time. One of the other complicating factors is who is the president? Because if, if you elect a president in the first term and the mayor has a disability early on, President A is only president for a year. Now, when the president becomes acting mayor, what happens when the year is up? Does the next president replace the acting mayor for the remainder of the term if it happens that early? That's, you know, but that's based on your rules. You may decide to do something, that's not in your charter. The one year terms for president must be in your rules. You'd have to figure out how to align your rules to that or figure that out.
The council know if it is a rule because it, it didn't used to be a one year term. That you could only serve for a one year term. Is that the way it is now?
Yes.
Generally, yes.
Yeah.
It doesn't necessarily, you could be voted in for a second term. It depends on the council's choice.
Okay, so that's the way it used to be too, but I I thought now it was just one year, so.
Okay.
I see that Nora has her hand up.
I do, but does Commissioner Raleigh want to say something before?
Well, it's just that I I don't know if I'm, it's just that this seems to be pretty nebulous and I can't remember what we did talk about in terms of this vacancy. And I think it needs to be really looked at again. It just seems to, I guess, I cannot remember what we, what we were thinking about it, but for the president of the common council, like everybody's been saying, to to take over, one, for, you know, very, no compensation until a month, and then two, I think it's not clear how long the person would be taking over before an election would have to happen.
No, the, the, the language is that they stay until the next biennial election. And so they would serve until the next biennial election. The, so the notion was the council president would automatically become the mayor. I think the way it's done now is if there is a vacancy, that's the reason we, we made it clear, I think the council gets to elect who the mayor would be. I don't think it automatically is the president. I, I, I stand, I'm willing to stand corrected on that. But I think that's the way it works and that's why I had recommended the, the normal succession is the president succeeds, but again, all those are all those are up to you. So, you know, I'll talk to the president about this if he wants to put a little group together to look at this issue. Happy to do so. I'm not sure we'll get it resolved here, but I know Nora has a question. I see the mayor has his hand up as well.
Nora was before me.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I just one quick point to this. So if you look at three, seven, A, underneath number two, there is a provisions for in the president's absence or disability, the council can designate a member. So I think there is some of that in there. I do agree with you, Steve, that this might, I think this might be worth us just having an. Uh I do agree with you, Steve, that this might, I think this might be worth us just having an, you know, given this nine thirty of conversation to get into some of the weeds on this and think about the succession. Um my other comment was actually not about the mayor or vacancy issue, so if Mayor really has something about that, I'll hold um until after he's uh spoken.
No, no, go ahead, Nora, I I can, go ahead.
No, I s- I wanted to um just fly for you, Steve, and again, we don't have to discuss this tonight, but I think there might be a provision missing in B for other vacancies. Um because B addresses the mayor, the council, and the Board of Ed, um but we could in theory have vacancies in other elected positions. Um you know, the um the registrars uh.
Registars are covered by state law.
Okay, um and again, I know the constables and all are, but you know.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point, we haven't discussed vacancies in the constables, maybe that that says something about what uh everybody was thinking, but the uh but the registrars were left out because they're governed entirely by state law.
Okay, which is is helpful to know um.
So we did think about it, yeah.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Uh yes, thank you, um three eight and three nine. Again, the, it looks like council members can only be removed if they accept uh or bargains uh for any fee or pecuniary consideration to influence a vote. Uh whereas, doesn't make mention anything about malfeasance, misconduct, neglect. Um I'm I'm just wondering whether that, or or if there's a prohibition against it.
Yeah, you know, Mayor, I think that's exactly what's in here in the charter now, I don't think we made any change to that section at all, and I think that's probably true uh of the uh section for the mayor as well, if I'm not mistaken uh. And again, it it went to that point of um not not going too substantively, so there are things that we haven't done. Um in here largely because we were focusing on on structure. Um but where there was a glaring omission, i.e. a reasonable succession uh process, I think the commission addressed it. Uh if you and the council think we should look at expulsion uh in a broader way. Um you know, let me just say this about both sections three dash eight and three dash nine. And I think court counsel will probably um back me on it. When it comes to, remember, we can't have recall in the state of Connecticut, right? There's no basis for taking uh somebody out of office uh in the middle of their term because we don't have the express grant, the voters do not have the express grant of authority from the general, we don't have the express grant of authority from the General Assembly to give the voters that opportunity uh in Norwalk or anywhere else in the state of Connecticut. These expulsion and removal provisions um all come from the special act. As a rule, I advise against modifying them because I don't know what damage we would be doing to the special act. And do we have authority beyond the special act uh to deal with the removal of local public officials? Um if you can't recall somebody, uh you can't term limit somebody. Um uh although there's no Supreme Court case on term limits, uh I use the same argument that I used in Simons versus Canty, you probably cannot do that. I think there's an argument for removal, which is a due process um procedural issue as opposed to a voting issue, I think you have some room, some movement to address those types of issues. Um but in all of these issues, I would expect a recalcitrant mayor or council member who was being um prosecuted under three dash eight or three dash nine would challenge the legal validity of the action. Uh probably using the case I argued at the Supreme Court, I don't think that case is entirely applicable there, but I think it's colorable. And so as a rule, um uh to answer the mayor's question, um one, we weren't changing a lot of these provisions. And two, as a rule, I tell people, let's avoid it. Um unless uh we want to add, maybe add other standards that are more up to date. Then some of the standards are in there, I don't think a court would have a problem with changing the special act. But I think when it comes to expulsion or removal, you're on pretty thin ice. Is my.
I get it, it's just the thought that um because the public elected the person. There should be a pretty high standard, but I also feel strongly that any elected official, we see this all over the country now, unfortunately, uh and right here in the state of Connecticut. Any uh elected official who is guilty of uh misconduct, malfeasance, or you know, uh some uh uh felonious uh activity, uh they they have no right to be in office.
Yeah, usually the courts deal with that by uh making it a condition of any pleas uh that the official uh resign. I think that's that's how in Bridgeport, we saw it, in Waterbury, we saw it. Um and so um, yeah, that's an issue I think that you should look at. Um and we should spend a little more time on maybe in another, in another process, but I um um I've not done the heavy research, but my research, I I do think there's an argument for expulsion and removal, Mayor, I I tend to agree with you, I think it's different than recall. Um uh this recall is not based on um due process considerations, it's entirely political. And the way these provisions are written, because you have super majorities, you're you're saying that they're not political because
Yeah.
Hope would be that um a bipartisan um council would make the decisions. Um and that's why the, why the threshold is so high. And so I think it's different, I would argue, on that, and I also think there's a due process element to those provisions. Um but we did have, in fact, it's a case I uh uh have not, was not involved in, it was a Superior Court case, I'm not sure I agree with it. But they did not uphold the Hartford, but I think the Hartford provision is similar to this, but I think it was based on some procedural issues. Uh not on the substance, uh so that, but that's the reason we didn't address the issue, we just couldn't do everything in this go, in this round. Are there any other questions, uh because I know it is getting late, we have one more section after this to address, Nora, did you have any others in other things in Article Three?
Uh not of substance in Article Three, no.
Okay, very good, so why don't we move to Article Four, if that's okay? Look, you you guys need to think about the the big issues, the term of office, et cetera. Um because let me, let me just explain two things, one is this. Um we're at a point where you really need to think definitively about what it is you want. But you should also leave enough room for discussion with the comment, with the with the commission. The fact that the commissioners are here, not all of them, but I'm sure that Patsy, uh Tyler and Bonita will be talking to their colleagues um from time to time to let them know what some of the issues are um as they come up, I will be communicating with them, I sent them Nora's comments, for example, so they could see what we were doing uh on the give and take. Um and you have two choices, you could either have a definitive, we want the four year term, this is the way it's going to be blah, 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 or you say, we think you need to think about it, but then we need to have an active discussion so that the commission can report back to you something definitively that you will either approve or disapprove. Because when you get it back from them, it's up or down, there's no compromise. So if they give you four, you can't do three, can't do three anyhow, but you, one of my point is, um if they give you four and it's aligned uh but you don't want it aligned, you don't have that choice, you have to vote it down. Uh so the important thing is that we maintain lines of communication, and that either you come up with a definitive view here and uh Patsy and her colleagues um can have informal discussions and know where you want to go and are comfortable with want want to go, or raise concerns before you take the final step. Um but this has been a very cooperative process, and I think that uh, you know, I think, I think that um you know, I think that will abode well in the process, but I just wanted to say to you that on the simpler things, it's easy. But on the mo- the more political issues, I think we need to try to maintain flexibility and maintain communication so that we can come up with um recommendations that will easily go through the commission and come back to you without um much change or any change. Sorry, so Article Four, I apologize for blabbering, but I thought that was important to uh point out because we are in a process here and we uh should um should uh know where we are, so the common council section, um I'm looking. Let me explain a couple of things in this section, um which were on my PowerPoint, but I I know them like the back of my hand, um Nora had a couple of questions, uh so I did something here. And Nora raised a question about it, and I want to explain why I did it the way I did it. This seems incredibly restrictive and impractical. Um. This is the state standard by the courts. This is, if we adopt this language, it will be the only charter in the state of Connecticut that actually lays out the rule of home rule, this is the home rule standard. Uh that term, not simply convenient but indispensable, is the term that's used by the courts. And that's why I did what I did. Um uh I understand Nora's point completely, but the courts will understand this uh if they see it. Um and I just thought um I would try putting in the the actual language of what home rule is, this is literally what the Home Rule Act says, this is what um Simons versus Canty says, and all the big cases in Connecticut say about home rule. Uh they're they're really uh express grants of authority. Uh and they're uh they're, you know, the indispensable. Um and what is indispensable? Indispensable will change from time to time, from generation to generation, but they're the things that are absolutely essential for the city um to uh conduct their business. Um lack of a better definition, so I'm happy to entertain modifications to the language, but I wanted um Nora and others to understand where this language came from and why I use it. And I see she has her hand up.
Fascinating, that's absolutely fascinating, does the language actually have the and and not the or though? Because I can see sort of one being all of our powers under the general statutes, the special acts, et cetera, and two being sort of our emergency powers, right?
I'll double check it, yeah, I'll double check it, I I think it's the and, I think it's both. It's, it was, yeah, it's.
I mean, obviously, I deeply believe that everything we do is absolutely essential for the city and indispensable. Um but it nonetheless does seem like um a surprisingly high standard to have set.
Yeah, no, it's a very, it's a very high standard, it it's, you don't have much authority beyond what's expressly granted to you. Uh and it needs to be expressly granted, it needs to be something that is critical to uh the operations of the city. Uh if this is too constricting, this is the, this is the legal standard that somebody will argue in court or can argue in court. Maybe a court will overturn it, but I'm just saying, this is the standard that you see in most of the home rule cases um in the state of Connecticut. And so uh if not other places where uh similar standards of home rule apply. And so uh that's the reason I stated it, um I will uh, I will check with a couple of my colleagues and see if I'm being too uh too uh professorial in in terms of having this in the charter. Um but I I uh wanted to explain, that's why it's there, uh it's a clearer statement of what home rule is uh in a charter, so uh I will um, I will double check it. Thank you for the question, that's the reason it's there. Again, we'll look at that executive level employee thing there, let me explain one other thing, and let me bring up my PowerPoint for this purpose. Um because I think it's useful at this point, look at all the stuff you missed, look at all the stuff we missed here tonight, uh here it is. So we reduced the municipal, your powers in B. Uh A states the home rule standard, B lays out some of the specific things that you have. Power to um adopt ordinances, power to your your role in adopting the budget uh and approving agreements, uh creating and consolidating divisions of government. Uh Nora raises the question, I have in here upon request of the mayor, I think that's your current standard. Um but I I I will stand corrected on that. Um what what you don't see uh in here, it's a list of twelve things, we've brought the twelve down from seventy nine or eighty one, I don't remember the exact number. Uh but you had like seventy nine or eighty one specific powers uh that were strewn throughout the charter. Um that when I was doing the integration, I looked at very carefully. And uh at some point, I'll give you this PowerPoint, oh, and actually, this is, I think, footnote number one forty three, so you, th- this PowerPoint um um page, or the next few pages are in footnote one forty three, to show you what I replaced those seventy nine items, or why I replaced those seventy nine items, I refer specifically to the Municipal Powers Act. Because in the Municipal Powers Act, you have all of these powers. And all of these powers that are highlighted, finances and appropriations, acquisition, management um and disposition of property, provision and management of public services, fire, entertainment and culture, public works, public utilities, get the point, highways and streets, regulatory and police powers, uh traffic, public health and safety, animals, noise, loitering, trespassing, uh vice, human rights, fees, fines, forfeitures, penalties, that's your ordinance authority and stuff, and then all the other things, corporate powers, personnel, et cetera, those things didn't exist when your charter was adopted nineteen thirteen. And so you don't need to have a recitation of eighty one powers um that are in the current charter, and that's why we were able to thin that down and modify um the legislative section um for only those items that um that um should um need to be there, and and item, for example, I did leave some. Um and you could decide. Yeah, and and you know, and by the way, this list of departments that you uh can't do anything about, uh the functions are exempted, the functions are exempted, not the departments, so as long as the functions are utilized somewhere. Um they um you can change the police, I'm not going to tell you to do this. You could consolidate police and fire into a protective services department, so you're not prevented from, the mayor's not prevented from proposing that, you know, you're not prevented from um uh adopting that change, that's in your current charter, but uh the um, for example, I left item number seven, I don't know how critical that is, you guys can decide that's not critical, but that didn't quite fall into some of the categories, although I think it probably could. Uh you had gunpowder and um keeping safe use of gunpowder, and I thought when you look at that in the context of item item number eight, which is a very unique authority. The the ability to regulate the discharge of firearms, um you'd probably end up at the Supreme Court on that one, but at least it's an express grant of authority. I left those in there as well, I left nine in, I'm not sure that's really necessary in light of the Municipal Powers Act, but I wasn't, uh I wasn't comfortable taking it out. Um and some of the others, um I'm I'm sure, not sure you need all of these things, I'm not sure you need eleven, but the rationale was the municipal powers covers most of your power, I see the uh Councilwoman Nadelski uh Eichner has a question.
Thank you, uh Mr. Mednick, um so I wanted to just briefly touch on um B two. Um, am I correct that the hundred thousand dollars is a change there?
What is the current standard?
I thought the current standard was ten thousand, I am a, I'm a hundred percent supportive of it being a hundred thousand. I'm would be thrilled, I would celebrate, I think that is correct, as a, but I just, and maybe I'm wrong. Um but I think we have typically operated on the council making approval, approving things that are over ten thousand.
Yeah, I think that becomes a call, Patsy, do you recall what the discussion was on this?
Yeah, I I don't know if this might be a typo, because I thought it was ten thousand also, we talked about um change. Changing it to twenty-five or, or not. So I'm confused on this.
I mean, I think it should, I think a hundred thousand would be a very reasonable standard. I would fully support raising this. You know, if we want to, but I, but you know, if it's fifty, if it's a hundred. We spend too much time on the council talking about things that are so de minimis that it's not actually a great use of our time. So anyway, but I think.
Yeah, we added the multi-year element, which, which I think is really critical for the council. No one else, no one else has that authority. I'm trying to remember where this came from, but I think the thought was it was a reasonable baseline. You could change it by ordinance. If you want to, you know, if your current standard is ten thousand, it's just too much of a leap. Yeah, should a council be sitting around arguing about fifteen thousand dollar contracts? I, I'm not sure. It's the time I wanted to spend on the Board of Alders. We did not. We had a hundred thousand dollar baseline even in the late nineties, eight, late eighties.
Yeah.
In the early nineties. So that's really a call for you, whatever your standard is. But I think you should have the flexibility to authorize a, a modified limit on that.
And I really appreciate putting that in. I think that's incredibly important, you having the ordinance power there. So thank you for, for that.
All right. So that's a call for you guys to make. I'm trying to see what else in council section is. Raise the question, Nora, about the consolidation of departments and divisions. Upon the request of the mayor. I think that was placed in there because we believe that that was the current standard. If that's not correct, please correct us or let us know.
And yeah, and it may be, we should, we, we'll, I'll double check and get back to you on that. I thought we had done some that were not opposed by the mayor, but we're not explicitly requested by the mayor, but I could be wrong. So I will follow up on that.
Okay. I'm going through the rest of the section. I don't think there are any other controversial. Oh. There are no other issues of significance. Again, please look at all the votes. This is a section that has a lot of. Voting standards in it and make sure that you're comfortable with the voting standards that are in this section. That really is, I'm begging, not, not requesting, I'm begging, because I think it's important for you. This is your document. You're going to be working with it as members of the council if you're all reelected with this charter. And, and, you know, and I think that you want to have a standard that makes sense. I don't know whether you want to, compensations in this section. I don't know if you want to discuss compensation. At this point or at some later point before it comes back to the commission, but it's in this section. Nora also raised a question in four dash ten. And I will tell you, four dash ten is your referendum authority. We did not change referendum authority with the exception of gender neutrality. I don't think we changed this at all. I think I did throw in the term petition for overrule. Because that's really what your referendum is. It's an overrule. Either, either an ordinance or in the budget section of the budget. And Nora raised a question about A, about the petitions. We didn't change anything. So I. It's a special act. Is it a special act? I think it's, yeah, one dash. I'd have to go back and look at what this, where this goes. Yeah, it's a special act.
Right, well, yeah, and nothing that I was raising was of a significant substance, particularly if it's a special act. This is probably not something worth spending a lot of time on.
Yeah, and we, we didn't change this. We didn't spend, Pat, Patsy, correct me if I'm wrong. We didn't spend any time on referendum at all. We want, we want, again, we wanted, didn't want to take a right away. Again, we were trying to reform the document, not the process. So we didn't spend much time on this at all. So. The, I will add the United States Constitution though.
Thank you.
I will have the United States Constitution. That's it on the sections. I hope I didn't take up too much of your time here this evening. Patsy, you have a.
Yeah, I just wanted to go to compensation for the council. Because we did discuss that and several council people spoke at one of our earlier meetings about. Changing that and we talked about it at length and, and if you can. Bring everybody up to date on, on your input on that, Steve, it would be helpful. But the referendum.
So we did add the language here to make it clear that this is a right that the council has. They have a right to additional compensation. The commission made a, a judgment based on review and due diligence. That, again, in the theory that this is a, that we are making some substantive changes. But we're, we're very careful with the substantive changes we've made. But I think by introducing the fact that council compensation by statute. And, and ask me why, and I'll tell you, I don't know, requires a referendum. So even if the mayor were to surprise you and the Board of Estimate were to say, we are raising. The sta, the. The, I'm taking a look here. I mean, I, one of the problems with the language is, is shall be set at six hundred dollars per annum. On the other hand, you do have a statute that you could argue overrides the charter. So let's say the mayor were, were to say, we want to put council salaries at a higher level. Or we're going to provide councils with, with a stipend or an expense account. Or whatever it might be. By state law, I believe all those things would have to go to referendum. So that if the, the budget passed, you'd have to go to referendum with a compensation. Increase for members of the council. Why there's a state statute is beyond my wildest imagination. I assume somebody in the legislature at some point. Thought it was a conflict of interest for council members to vote on their own salaries. Which is odd because if you looked at the, the list, I think I put the list up a few moments ago. I think salaries, no, salaries weren't in that list. But if you look at the salary list, which I can provide for you. Council members do not get paid a lot of money. New Haven has been a little higher than yours, but they've had, this goes back, yours goes back to the thirties. New Haven's goes back to the eighties when I was still there. And I think we got two thousand a year, and that's where they still are. They're now raising it in this particular charter cycle as, as we are talking right now. So, so, so it was determined that they would not take this on this time. Perhaps it's an issue that could be taken on in the next two years. Or if the mayor wants to put it into the budget in the next year, it would have to go to referendum. The reason I end up putting compensation in charters is with a cost of living increase. Is that, and this has never been tested. No one's ever challenged it, but in all my charters that have compensation provisions for council members. I, my theory is that. The charter is adopted by referendum. And the voters are approving a baseline with a COLA. And I don't believe the COLA is subject to further referendum. Because it's been approved by the voters. And so it allows for kind of an automatic increase. Now, also, if you did have a COLA, for example. There's another restriction. The, and this is a restriction that applies to the mayor as well and to the, any other elected officials with compensation. And that is, you're not entitled to a COLA increase annually. You're, you're entitled to a COLA increase prior to the commencement of office. So this year would have been a COLA increase year for January one. If that were to occur, and if it's a four-year term, you're not entitled to another COLA. Until the third of your fourth years. So again, in the municipal cycle. Where nobody would be running if you ended up having a four-year term that's aligned. You would have the increase reflected in the third year of terms for both the mayor and the council. So that's, that's the story with compensation.
Yeah, and I just thought it was important to have the council know. The logic and why we did what we did so that you can explain it to the rest of the council members.
Council member? Nora?
Sorry, I was muted there. Thank you both for that explanation and that information. And I, I tend to agree that it makes more sense to do this in two years than it does this year. Just for limiting distractions, but I am just curious, since you mentioned it, what is New Haven raising their compensation to?
Why are you asking me hard questions?
Approximations.
Four thousand, four thousand dollar range and five thousand for the president. Roughly, here, I'll find it. I was just working on that today. I don't remember exactly, but I think that's the rough number that.
Thanks, just, this is curious. We, we can revisit this in two years.
Yeah, Middletown, here's the crazy thing, and I, I represent Middletown. It's not in their charter, but they get nine thousand a year, which, yeah. Which is next to Hartford, the highest, and they're one of the smaller cities. I have not asked them how they did it. And when they did it, it was not in their charter, did their charter two years ago. It was not in their charter. And I, I pray that they did a referendum when they did it, but I don't know. But there's a statute that covers that. They're, they're the second highest paid council in the state.
If, if I can just add, Steve, I think the council, if, if you're not going to increase it with this revision. The council works very hard, and that's six hundred dollars, which went back to the nineteen thirties. If you ca, if you calculate that in today's dollars, it'd be a lot more than that. So I think we really should consider compensating them in a manner that we think is fair. But that's just my opinion.
Yeah, no, it's mayor, I'm a former alder, I'm a former legislator at the local level. People have no idea how hard city councils and legislative bodies, local legislative bodies work. And how many nights a week they're away from their families. I, you know, I was accused for eight years of running for the Board of Alders. Because I got paid so much, but first eight years I got no compensation. My last two years I got two thousand dollars. And, and that was the nine, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one in that period of time. So I, I agree with the mayor completely. I think it's a political judgment that everybody needs to make. Can, you know, does it make sense to put this off and, and tackle it in two years? Or is it something you want to tackle in this cycle? So that's a political judgment. On the merits, I don't think there's any question. Council member Meek, just a minority leader.
Yeah, thanks. On the, on the point of compensation for council members. We, we'd actually be better off getting zero dollars than six hundred. That would allow us as non-W two employees to deduct from our federal income taxes volunteer.
Is that a motion? Is that a motion, sir?
I, I don't know if it's, I'm, I'm just saying, if, if we didn't get that money, we'd be able to deduct a lot more.
Yep. And he's a guy that knows income taxes.
I wasn't challenging him, I was asking.
But I would just say that's not for everyone, because not everyone is in a space to have to do that. For example, I could even explain, if you're on a disability and you're here, but you don't file the tax. That wouldn't be helpful in any way, shape or form. Therefore, compensation is helpful. So being open-minded to the fact of diversity and who's here and what can be of people's circumstance should kind of be thought of.
She's correct. Under, under existing federal tax code, that, that would only be a benefit for people who itemize their deductions.
Right.
But that changes with one act of Congress too. Just a side note.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? If not, I'm finished with my presentation. Mr. President, we should probably talk about. Our next meeting.
Um, thank you, Steve. We will have to, I will have to circle back with you. So that we can identify a date. I believe we did not have a hard and fast date for next week. So we, I'll have to circle back with you and confer with the council to find out what day next week would be. A viable day to have the next workshop.
Can I just tell you, I am not available on Thursday, the twenty-second. Was it the twenty-first? On Wednesday, the twenty-first. Let me just check. Let me just check, I'm sorry.
I think Thursday is the twenty-second, I think.
Yes, it is. The twenty-first, I'm not available.
That's Wednesday.
Wednesday, twenty-first, so I'm available the twentieth, possibly the twenty-second, but not the twenty, not the twenty-first.
Okay.
Okay, well, if there's no further business to come before the council, Ms. Gilgioski-Eichner.
Just very, very quickly, what articles are we going to be reviewing next time so that we can get started on our reading?
Yeah, what I would say is, let's, let me look here quickly. I may look like a professor with the beard, but I'm not really, so let me think it through. We should probably go over the mayor of Articles five, six. I, I would say let's go through five, six, seven, and eight, which is boards and commissions and departments. A good chunk of the charter. Leading the budget and education and others, you know, the budget will take us a little while. But I think if we ambitiously look at those four, that would be a really ambitious. And I think a doable project for us. Okay?
Right, well, thank you. I, I really want to thank the Charter Revision Commission. I, I know they've worked real hard, really hard, and Steve, your knowledge and experience and expertise has probably. Made this a lot easier than it could have been. To take our charter, to take our charter and to organize it in a readable fashion. So you don't have to search for this page, that page, everything else. I'm really impressed. And I truly appreciate what you've done, what the Charter Revision Commission has done. And I think we're, we're putting together a document here that'll serve the city well. And, you know, I, I, I just can't stress enough how impressed I am. I, I think Ms. Young has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to all of you who've gone through this process. As everyone has said, this, this has been a, a, a huge undertaking and you guys have done it well. And to me, in a really short amount of time, given the size of that. So this has been amazing work, and I want to thank Nora and all the other council members. Who, who've submitted, you know, their, their ideas to this process. Because it has helped a lot, and so I appreciate that as well. And, 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 and just thank you. And it's late.
And we're happy.
And we're happy, right?
Thank you, everybody.
Just quickly, in nineteen seventy-five, Norwalk elected the first and only, unfortunately. Female mayor, woman mayor of the city of Norwalk. And she always used to say, read the charter, read the charter. Now people can read the charter.
All right, that's right. Absolutely.
I absolutely, I hope so.
Ms. Revolus?
Motion to adjourn, y'all. Good night.
Have a motion to adjourn all in favor.
Good night.
At ten oh nine.
Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.